Okay, this is the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Oregon City on January 27, 2025, and let's call the roll.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Here.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Here.
Commissioner Stoll?
Here.
Commissioner Laws?
Here.
Chair Espy?
Here.
And we have a set of minutes to approve, is that correct? Okay, do any of the commissioners have comments on the minutes? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, what was the date?
January 13th.
The January 13th minutes of the Oregon City Planning Commission?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Schlagenhoffer and seconded by Commissioner LaSalle. Public comments, are we just, this is, at this point in the hearing, we allow for public comments that are not-
I'm sorry, Chair Espy, we need to take a roll call vote on the minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that's right.
Commissioners LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioners Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioners Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Chair Espy?
Aye.
Something really quick, I don't have a notepad and pen.
Oh, okay.
Okay, at this point in the public hearing, our public meeting, we have an opportunity for public comments that are not, are about items not necessarily on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody that is interested in making public comments? If they are, please fill out a speaker slip that is available on the table in the back there, and hearing done, we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is the public hearing. And tonight, we have two public hearings. We have before us two public hearings, and our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us, and in making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws, and cannot vary from or change those codes or laws. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing, and the staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The hearing procedure that the Planning Commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code, and the hearing procedure steps are shown on the Planning Commission website. Public testimony will be called on the order it was requested. If you wish to testify in person, please fill out a speaker card available in the back of the room over on the table there. If you wish to testify virtually, you will be called either from a request to speak emailed to city staff, or in advance of this meeting by raising your virtual or physical hand on, if you're, on the Zoom platform. Want to ask if there are others in the audience who would like to participate, you can go ahead and testify at that point. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. If you'd like to receive a copy of the notice of decision or other materials, please state your mailing address or email address so that we can efficiently send them to you. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria, and if you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing to continue, uh, to present additional evidence and testimony, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the initial, before the initial hearing is closed. Planning Commission makes a decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must be, or must have been raised before the Planning Commission in order to be considered by the City Commission, and in the event of further appeal, the Land Use Board of Appeals. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence allowing the city and all parties to respond, the issue will not be considered on appeal. In addition to participating orally or in writing or raising all issues during the Planning Commission proceeding, the filing of appeals must include the required fee. A city organized neighborhood association may request a waiver of an appeal fee subject to the requirements set forth in the city code. In addition to the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in civil court. Okay, and at this point, we will open the public record for GLUA 2400027, MAS 2400002, and WRG 2400001. For the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, the proposed master plan amendment to CP 1702 to create framework for future development of the site that reflects the values of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde Community of Oregon, we are ready for the staff report, I believe.
All right, before we start the staff report, Deputy City Attorney Carrie Richter is going to go over some procedure questions and issues, so I am going to have Kay open up the PowerPoint.
Oh, I think, I think before we get started on that, Christina, we probably should do the-
Ex parte contact, conflict of interest?
Yes, that's right. So, at this point, does any commissioner have any conflict of interest, ex parte contact bias, or any other statement to declare or have visited the site? Commissioner LaSalle, we'll start with you, and then we will just go right down the line to declare whether or not we've had those kinds of things going on.
I have no ex parte conflict, conflict of interest or ex parte contact. Okay, no conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact. Site visit, I haven't visited the site in, probably in six years, and at the time, they were starting to take it apart, but I drive by it often, so I can see how that looks, and a lot of graffiti these days, a lot more than there used to be. I guess I'd say nothing else to disclose.
Yep, same, I have visited the site before all the demolition occurred, and I have no conflicts or bias.
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact, and no bias.
I mentioned on an email more recently about seeing this more as a legislative decision, beyond that, I was curious about that, concerned. The only other is that I went to the Neighborhood Association meeting for Two Rivers and watched that presentation, and that is the only information that I have, otherwise no ex parte contact, no conflicts of interest.
Okay, and Attorney Richter, I think you have a presentation about the procedure for tonight.
Before I start that, I just want to poll the audience and see if anyone in the audience wants to question the commissioners about any of these disclosures.
Hearing none, I think we're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair Espy and Planning Commissioners, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I wanted to talk, before you open the hearing for testimony and hear the rest of the staff report, I wanted to talk briefly about the process that we're following tonight. We're following a quasi judicial process, and the reason why is because of state law and local code, and the easiest way to, I think, understand this is to look at the definitions in the code for legislative decision-making and quasi judicial decision-making. Legislative decision-making is when you approve or deny a request to amend the city's land use regulations, comprehensive plan, or related map, and it doesn't pertain to a particular property. So, for example, the second item on your agenda tonight, FEMA, PICM code amendments, that is a legislative action because you'd be amending the city's code. By contrast, a quasi judicial decision is defined in the code to mean any final decision that applies the provisions of Oregon City Municipal Code 16 or 17 in response to an application that pertains to a specific property or a small set of properties, and which is legally required to result in a decision by the city. So, here we have a general development plan amendment proposal, and the code says that amendments are processed through a type three review. That is a quasi judicial type of discretionary review that goes to the Planning Commission. So, we're applying OCMC Chapter 17 in response to an application filed by the tribe that pertains to a particular property, the Lamont Falls property, and the city has a legal obligation to issue a decision. The city couldn't just say, "I'm not going to decide that." The city has an obligation to make a decision in this type of quasi judicial review. It might be interesting for the Planning Commission to note that the original 2014 general development plan review was processed as a quasi judicial review as well, because it was applying code to the same, to a specific property. What we needed a type four, which was a different category, but still quasi judicial review, was that it included some code changes that applied just to the property. So, it was quasi judicial review in that instance as well. Type four review is not available in this case because there is no plan amendment consolidated with this general development plan proposal. So, I provided, I outlined this in greater detail in a memo dated January 16th. I'd be happy to respond to any of the commissioners' questions, but we're going to move forward with the type three quasi judicial review.
Is that it, Carrie?
That is it.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate the presentation and also the drafting of the memo that really led a lot of clarity to where we were going and why, and I think that was really important, given the nature of the public testimony that we've received thus far. So, I can go ahead and continue on with the, with the agenda, and, and as part of the hearing, I think we are ready for staff's presentation. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Chair Espy, okay. I'm gonna turn my, the great test, it works, yay. Okay, so this is an overview slide, I'm going to kind of go through, there's a lot of information, but I wanted to go through all of it in detail to get the Planning Commission kind of oriented to what is being proposed tonight. On the left is process, which is really a clarification of the same thing Ms. Richter said, was as a quasi judicial type three Planning Commission review. The last time this was in front of the Planning Commission was in 2014, it was associated with a zone change and a text amendment to the Limer Greenway for only the properties as better, that were being reviewed for the master plan. So, meeting that quasi judicial description, it was for specific properties. So, the only, the Lamont Falls, excuse me, the Lamont Falls Downtown District is only related to the properties that are in this master plan, or were in the previous master plan. Okay, two, any appeal goes to the City Commission, ex parte contacts and conflict of interests apply, and you did your disclosures. The one different thing that you're not, that I wanted to do with this application is we have an amendment to a master plan that has a potential 20-year horizon, and we have a very specific detailed development plan that was consolidated for timing reasons for the applicant, because they wanted to move forward with the street construction. So, I broke it up into two staff reports, so future applicants and planners and citizens don't have to look through street conditions of approval 10 years from now. So, tonight, you will have one motion, one vote, but the staff reports were just broken into two for aid of implementation as we move forward. So, what you see here is the proposal is to develop a master plan amendment to create a framework for future site development that reflects the values of the new property owner, Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ronde Community, by amending the existing master plan CP 1402. There's also a detailed development plan for streets and infrastructure. No specific building projects are proposed with this application, and the framework plan envisions future development to include a combination of open space, commercial, residential, and employment uses, with provisions for public access and enhancement for riparian resources. You'll see on the slide, to the left is the DDP application, which is the street improvements, which looks at a new, excuse me, a new private street with public access easements on the property, as well as frontage improvements on McLaughlin Boulevard, Highway 99E, and to your right is the framework master plan. Thank you, Kay. So, some items to enter to the record tonight. There is two small little grammatical revisions that need to happen on the DDP staff report, and working with ODOT, there were three projects identified, or there are three projects identified as off-site safety improvements as part of the previous master plan. One of those projects have been met, was already constructed, which is some tunnel illumination as you go into the tunnel and some advanced signage that was done a couple of years ago, and there was a philosophical discussion as do we remove that completed project from the amended master plan list? And we ended up saying, ended up with no, because we have a memorandum of understanding, we just identified that Project A is complete. So, when, back and forth, back and forth, we went back through the staff report, renumbered all the projects, so it was A, B, and C, and we missed one. So, in the DDP, it identifies a Project C, it's actually Project B, it was related to the old numbering, so that will be revised in the notice of decision, and there's two repeat conditions, so one will be, be removed, as condition of approval number seven will be eliminated. The transportation demand management plan, which the city adopted in 2018, which looks at different ways and, and toolboxes to bring people through pedestrian and bike and transit access to downtown, was referenced in the findings, but I want to include it in the record. So, that, actually, I have a hard copy of the TDM plan on the dais, I think Chair Espy has it, that's just going to be referenced in, in the record, it was identified in the findings. The applicant, as part of their EPA Brownfield grant, held an open house where they talked about their projects. It happened during the public comment period, so they were able to get a video of that, and they have entered that into the record as well, so you can click on that link in the future and get access to that open house that they provided. I have two written public comments that I received today, you should have on your dais. John Lewis provided written testimony, I know he's here this evening to speak, as well as Paul Edgar presented an email testimony, I see he's also here, so those will be entered into the record. Okay. So, the master plan revisions, I'm going to go over a slide for each of the main elements. I've broken up the proposed amendments to CP 1402 into topic areas. Those topic areas are, correspond to the topic areas in the executive summary of the staff report, so you could also follow along as I move through the slides if you want to cross-reference that to the executive summary of the staff report. Those are, the applicant is looking at amending the original framework master plan to provide some revisions to the future development review process, revisions to the framework master plan map, revised conditions for ensuring public access, that was addressed, the Riverwalk requirement, conditions related to retention of structures on site, background on transportation, and there's some other modifications, revisions. Those include adopting of a fence standard specifically for the site, since it is so unique, adopting of the street design and street network, which will be implemented through the associated DDP, and some opportunities in the interim parking area where there will one day be a future parking garage, and there currently really isn't much soil to allow above-ground landscaping and trees in an interim parking condition. The first item in the overview is the amendment to the development review process. In the 2014 master plan, there was initially a temporary placeholder until a new owner with a clear vision emerged, so some of the temporary placeholder conditions required a limitation on full site demolition, so that identified four buildings for retention, as well as some additional elements, and a requirement for future development to be reviewed at type three process, and there was some boilerplate urban design standards put in place. And this was really in response to a public's goal to maintain authenticity on the site and to really know who the future owner and vision would be, since the framework plan, while there was an owner, was most likely not going to be the owner that was going to develop the site, and there wasn't necessarily a vision yet for the site redevelopment. So, the 2025 amended master plan proposes eliminate a boilerplate urban design requirements, because the applicant has provided a solid vision for the redevelopment, identified new information related to the building retention, building conditions, changes in the determination of eligibility, and is again, their revised vision for the site. So, with this master plan, all future DDPs will go back to their traditional type two city staff review. Master plans allow for a master plan amendment that is implemented through a type two DDP process, as every other master plan in the city, and this eliminates uncertainty for site investment. Property owners who know that each, each application would have to go back to the Planning Commission provides a lot of uncertainty for investment, and so this really, like everybody else, sends them back to the type two process using our city development code. And as always, amendments to any master plan require going back to you for a type three review, just like we're doing tonight. So, as part of the proposal, there are some small revisions to the framework plan, so what you see on your screen is the applicant's proposed framework plan, and I have some key numbers identified, and I'll kind of walk through those really quickly. These are the, the changes really from the 2014 map, which is in your staff report, as well as the proposed revised map. So, item number one you'll see is the inclusion of a railroad avenue. Previously, there was a thought to have maybe a roundabout at the end of Main Street, and further research and analysis has indicated that that cannot occur, so there has to be a way to turn traffic around closer to the site. So, the inclusion of a railroad avenue, like a little street against, against the railroad frontage was identified, and that will allow the site circulation, because cars are not set up to be able to both structurally and also physically, there's not enough turning radius to do a roundabout at the end of Main Street. So, that's item one, and you'll see that closer to the bottom of the plan map. Item two, you'll see the identified four buildings, those are the removal of number four, paper machine, de-ink- Those are the removal of number four, Paper Machine, D Ink, Mil O, and the Holly Building, as well as a side reference to the location of the McLaughlin House, which was not relevant for the tribal vision. Number three, change Block Two from development to a hybrid development public open space. This is where the applicant has identified a new public plaza. Initially, a public plaza was going to be identified in Block Three, but further analysis of the unstructured fill and liquidation factor, if there was ever an earthquake, public space cannot really occur in Block Three, as well as the applicant's goal of taking out that fill and restoring that shoreline. So the public open space and plaza, part of it, will be moved to Block Two and be integrated in the Flower Mill Foundation. Number four, include a half block of a previously owned by another property owner into this master plan and retains its mixed-use downtown zone. So the old gas station, which was owned by Enders, the property owner bought that. So the tribe now owns that, and they're actually voluntarily bringing it into the master plan. They don't have to, but they want to bring it into the master plan. They're not going to change the zoning. They're going to keep the mixed-use downtown zone, but they don't have to. So it's going to stay mixed-use downtown, that small little block, which mixed-use downtown allows all your, all the options they may want to have on the site anyway. So let's see. Number five, you'll see the Riverwalk. So in 2014, when the framework plan was adopted, a line on a map was added called the Riverwalk. And I like to think of this like a TSP project line, like a transportation system plan, where you're just saying a project will go from point A to point B and will be designed at a later date. So that is not being removed from this framework master plan. There will still be public access from point A to point B, and that has been identified and will stay on the map. Let's see. The final location will be determined by topography and development patterns and where the applicant chooses to balance restoration versus access. And then number six, you'll see, as part of the previous framework master plan, Block Three turned into green open space right at the footprint of the Mil O Foundation, which is a pretty skinny foundation. So working with the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron, that section was made a little bit wider and turned into light yellow, which is a hybrid of private development and open space. So it allows a little bit more flexibility when rebuilding in that footprint. Correspondently, there is an additional condition of approval that does require ensure that there is public access between a shoreline and private development, so there never is public or private property closer to the river than public access, and that there is a associated public open space as part of that. So that is the area number six. Do the planning commissioners have any questions about those amendments?
Any question?
Yes, I do.
Oh, wait.
It seems to me that I...
There we go.
It seems to me that I saw somewhere where D Ink, Mil O, and Holly were designated as historical sites.
Sure, and I have a future slide on that, and I can go get to that on my...
Okay, thank you.
So this I wanted to lay out, this is the physical representation of the revised framework master plan. If you compared kind of 2014 to today, I wanted to itemize the changes so you understand the difference. Because as part of this, you'll be amending and approving an amended framework plan map. And so this would be the amended framework plan map the planning commission would be approving. Commissioner Stolli, do you have a question?
Anybody else?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So public access, Riverwalk pedestrian routes. I have all three of those as one title because they all kind of are the same thing using different words, and I'm going to kind of explain that. So the Riverwalk combines open space with pedestrian paths and remains essential for fully implementing the framework master plan, but specifically the Willamette River Greenway. So the Willamette River Greenway code requires, you know, with redevelopment, public access. And so the original framework plan map identified a plan to provide public access along the shoreline closest to the river and having private development be behind it. And so working with the applicant, we've identified a way to ensure that as the site develops, that public access will be acquired and public access easements will be placed on pedestrian routes along the shoreline. So you see in your map here, map section nine, there's a revised version that's in the agenda packet, and you'll see the dotted blue lines. Those are identified pedestrian routes. When any pedestrian route is built on identified block as part of the detailed development plan, a DDP, public access easements will be required to be recorded at the time of each section of that pedestrian route being built. Additionally, if any development is built on one of those blocks and there's a pedestrian route that's located in an identified street, so for example, if you look at the pedestrian route that runs along Main Street, if one of the blocks that kind of are closest to the railroad, if they redevelop, the applicant will have to build the pedestrian route almost as frontage. So you either get a frontage or as part of a development.
Christine, are you going to need to have any... ...this plan and...
Well, yes. So as you'll see from the plan in purple, we've identified areas where these pedestrian routes connect up to other planning projects offsite. So you'll see one of the options for the pedestrian bridge over to West Lynn, the bike pedestrian bridge, one location, the city commission identified potentially two locations. One of that is that purple arrow, which will line up with the work actually that's happening on Water Street today. The work on the McLaughlin Boulevard enhancement is kind of that arrow that kind of goes off to the right that will hook up to the work there. And as part of, you know, a city identified transportation system plan project is a pedestrian bridge up to the McLaughlin Promenade. And you'll see that bridge. And that is, in our transportation system plan, there are no development triggers as part of this, but it is anticipated that we'd work all together as partners. But anytime a detailed development plan is submitted, the applicant needs to provide space planning. The location is not specifically identified, so it's a collaboration of what makes the most sense of where to land that bridge. So people have asked a little bit about public easement by Metro. That is a public easement that the city is not a party to. What this master plan does is ensures public access be built as development occurs to meet our Willamette Greenway code, which really was the beginning of the framework master plan. That's the nexus, is the Willamette River Greenway code that requires pedestrian access along the shoreline as part of development. So as part of this amendment, we go back to the original master plan approval, and we go back to the Willamette Greenway code. And that's our nexus to still ensure the public access can occur. All right, now Commissioner LaSalle, this is the slide. So I have about three slides on retentions of structures on site. So this property is not a historic district and is not regulated by our historic overlay district. So there's no landmarks or historically designated resources of local review. Quasi judicial applications are not subject to Goal Five, and that Goal Five looks at historic and natural resources. And even if this was subject to Goal Five, the requirement of Goal Five is not to mandate preservation or rehabilitation. It is to survey and to analyze, which the applicant has surveyed, and they have analyzed this property. So they, even if they had to meet Goal Five, they have absolutely met the intent of Goal Five, which is have you looked at these resources on site and have you analyzed them? There's no mandate for, that requires any rehabilitation. This is not a Goal Five. This is not legislative. This is not regulated by our historic overlay. However, new information has been provided. In 2014, the city looked at building condition. What structurally could you, what's the level of investment you would need? What are the conditions of the building? Of those buildings, could you actually lease it out? Could you create leasable space? Could this become, you know, the water treatment plant wasn't necessarily one you could lease out as offices, or some of them are very purpose-built. And finally, the determination of eligibility. Could this building be eligible to be unlisted on the National Register? And one of the things we were looking at in 2014 was if a future developer wanted to take advantage of a federal tax credit, that's one of the things you need to do is to be eligible. So a little bit was advertising, right? Advertising for future property owner. We may have some buildings that might be eligible if you wanted to take advantage of tax credit, but this is not subject to historic review. The eligibility is a background piece of information that was used in addition to building condition and building assessment. And now we have an addition piece, which is the Tamwata Village Vision. So we have continuously eroding building conditions. We have an updated National Register eligibility, so only two buildings are potentially eligible for listing on the National Registry. And the Tamwata Village does not support the retention of these buildings. Their goal is healing the site, and really it would burden the owner to require the retention of him because it's not meeting their goals. Sorry, Kay. Okay. So another ways to say it is the planning commission is not beholden to the decisions before, but what staff and the applicant has done has identified, this is all background information, so looking at the eligibility for National Register listing, the building conditions, and the Tamwata Village Vision. And together, they can help the planning commission identify should this master plan condition be amended. So staff has provided background and findings, and I know the applicant's here to speak to that. So for those who are confused on the location of these buildings, I just want to identify where they are on a map. So what you see in green, number five and six, are the two foundations that the property owners are looking at retaining, and that is the Woolen Mill Foundation. And it's called a couple of things, but it's the Flower Mill Foundation and Warehouse Foundation, but also called the Number Two Paper Machine Site. They're all kind of right there, and you don't see the foundation today because the Flower Mill Foundation, what you see in the area number six, is actually below ground. So with the removal of that building, that foundation will be exposed and be integrated into the plaza and public space that the applicant is looking to construct. For anybody who's been on site, you've probably walked through the Woolen Mill Foundation. That is right on Main Street, and the applicant is retaining that. The two buildings I have outlined in, kind of in red as a cross-out, are the two buildings that were identified by the State Historic Preservation Office of still retaining eligibility for listing. That's the Horton Sphere. That's a sulfuric acid bowl used in the papermaking process, and that is located right at the end of Main Street, really across the street from the Holly Building. And that is the Willard Holly Building, which is right at the dam. And so those are the two buildings that the tribe does not want to keep. They want to do pretty extensive restoration in that area, and that would be, requiring that to be retained would really be a burden because it would not be meeting their restoration goals in that area. So I'm going to go on to transportation. So these are just kind of a brief recitation of facts, but I wanted to get some of the transportation issues out and be able to answer questions that the planning commission may have. So the applicant revised the site's redevelopment goals from 2014 to today, and it's about half, so it's more modest. It's about half the level of anticipated building area, which would be half the level of trip generation. The applicant, however, wants to retain that capacity cap, so they're proposing no changes. More was analyzed in 2014, and those conditions were put on. The applicant is looking at probably building less, but they just want to retain the existing conditions. And the city, after the master plan and zone change were approved a little over a year later, the city went in with a memorandum of understanding with ODOT to identify those three projects. So I'll go through those projects again. These were off-site improvements identified as part of the approval based on the kind of 7,000 square foot of development area, which is, you know, twice the size of what the applicant is looking at. And those three projects, one is done. That is the advanced signage as you move northbound in the tunnel and better lighting. So you've all been having the pleasure of using that last couple of years. That project is complete. The next project is prohibiting left turns northbound as you come out of the tunnel onto the site. So you'll, when Project Two is completed, Project B, you will no longer be able to turn left onto the site as you go northbound. You'll actually have to turn right onto Railroad Avenue. You'll have to go around a little indirect way and go, take Railroad Avenue and get onto the site through Main Street. There's a deceleration planned and an additional kind of pedestrian refuge. If you recall, in my presentation this last fall with the McLaughlin Boulevard Enhancement Plan, that was shown on the plan, which is to provide, when pedestrians leave the pedestrian tunnel, right now there's inches from you to people turning right onto Railroad. So deceleration lane will have a little bit of an arc, a little bit more of a pedestrian refuge. And that project is actually integrated into the McLaughlin Boulevard Enhancement Plan, and we are applying, as we speak, for grants to potentially build it. So if that grant is awarded to the city and those funds are authorized, this can be built through a capital improvement project, and that project will be completed. So either way, the applicant is required to build it when they meet one trip more than when the mill closed. The mill had 140 PM peak trips when they closed, and so the applicant, per the memorandum of understanding, is required to build that when they hit one more trip past what the mill was at. It's probably going to be about two or three projects, and it won't be the first project. So I hope we get the grant because then that will be resolved, and that project will complete. The last project is a ride-in, ride-out at Water Street or a median divider, and that is something that the applicant is working with ODOT on, and is part of this detailed development plan. So when this amendment to this master plan is complete, there'll be one project left, and that is the Railroad Deceleration Lane, and hopefully that project will be awarded grant funding. And so then all three projects will be completed soon. So that is the memorandum of understanding. Those are the three projects. Those are the offsite. The applicant is not anticipating to build even close to what was pre-agreed to in the 2014 plan. That's what we see in your master plan. Conditions are carryforward. ODOT had some small little suggested grammar changes. We incorporated those, but for the most part, their wholesale continued because no amendments are being proposed. Okay. So there's three modifications the applicant is looking at doing. One, I've been waiting for years. I'm very excited. As you can imagine, fencing the site is really, really, really complicated. You have a lot of people trying to get to the site. You have people walking on Railroad. You have cliffs. You have natural resources. You have active construction sites. And the applicant with their design team put together a really thoughtful approach on fencing and different types of fencing in different areas and how the site can be aesthetically pleasing and safe. And so with that package is available in your, it is an exhibit in the agenda this evening of the staff report, and that would then be followed at any future DDP. It does allow chain link fences in certain areas for security and safety, which is only allowed through a planning commission review. Staff could not allow chain link fences in this area. Chain link fences are not proposed kind of in the front area where there would be kind of finished condition. This would be either safety in the back part of the property or as part of construction Interim parking, as I mentioned, there is no soil up near the front part of the property where there is a proposed parking garage, but we'll have an interim parking lot paved to meet the city standards. But as part of this, rather than having the applicant have to bring in, you know, soil for an interim condition, they're proposing to have plantings and trees be above-grade for an interim condition. So with this, the planning commission can allow staff to review a new parking lot with above-grade landscaping and stormwater. And finally, streets as part of this application, a revised street design for a private street with public access. A revised street design for a private street with public access easements would be approved through the master plan and then implemented through the DDP. This amendment, yeah, so this is their private street network with public access easements. And I have one more slide, one or two more slides. The Willamette River Greenway, as I mentioned before, this is the nexus for the Riverwalk public pedestrian routes. Because of this amendment to the master plan map, which slightly increases the light-yellow area, which is the hybrid open space development, staff has identified an additional condition that requires additional open space in that area. The Flood Management Overlay District, the applicant provided updated methodology and findings for the floodplain in this area, both the 1996 inundation and the 100-year floodplain. And staff has accepted their methodology, and will be able to use that moving forward for all future detailed development plans. And finally, Natural Resources Overlay District and GeoHazard, those will be reviewed at time of detailed development plan, and no changes are being proposed as part of this. So I have two slides on the detailed development plan. This is consolidated with the master plan, so that's why you're seeing it in front of you today. Normally, detailed development plans are at a Type II level, but two reasons, it's consolidated for timing, but also it's consolidated because the existing conditions require detailed development plans to go in front of the Planning Commission unless amended with this master plan. So I see some just Google street views of the Water Avenue connection to McLaughlin Boulevard and Main Street. Next slide. So this is a private street with public access, which allows much more flexibility in design and street amenities, specifically lighting, street furniture, et cetera, that can meet the tribe's vision. It's a lot easier through a private street with public access easements. No buildings are being constructed as part of this approval. And the McLaughlin Boulevard frontage is controlled by ODOT, and they are the permitting entity, though they did pass on their requirements, which we've cross-referenced in the staff report. So what ODOT, but the applicant will need to work with ODOT for all frontage permitting. ODOT provided comment in your packet, which looked at concurring that no changes were being made to the memorandum of understanding, except for the small clarity, and that they provided what they will be requiring the applicant to build on the frontage. So that's a lot of background information, but I want to get on topics. You have options tonight. You can approve the proposal with submitted conditions. You can approve the proposal with modified conditions and provide revised findings for staff. You can deny the proposal, or you could continue the hearing. So all are open. I'm available for questions. We also have the applicant here with their presentation as well and public comment.
Questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Slakenoff.
A question on cut and fill. On a site this big with a master plan, can cut and fill be discussed on a master plan level? Like, let's say you've got one lot, then it needs dirt. Can you say, "Well, we can't really cut and fill on this one lot, but we could remove dirt from another lot," you know, and then add it to this one? Is that allowed? And I know we're not discussing the detailed development.
Sure. No, this is a, well, you are in a sense approving it. I mean, it's still part of your application. Exactly. The way the floodplain code and the condition of approval looks at is, over the 20-year timeframe of the master plan, can you achieve balanced cut and fill? So at each detailed development plan, the applicant will submit their proposal. The city will provide the necessary conditions to ensure that by year 20, the detailed, the balanced cut and fill will be achieved.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Do, can you tell us yet how many parking spaces they have planned?
I cannot because no development is being proposed, and they would need to meet our development code as required.
And then, I understood that the streets will all be private streets?
With public access easements, correct. That is, as part of the CP 1402, two options were allowed, either public streets or private streets with public access easements. And the property owner has pursued the second option, which is private streets with public access easements.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That brings up another question. So if there's a private street, could they say, could they limit hours on a private street?
No, public access allows full public access of vehicles and pedestrians.
But they have the maintenance then?
Correct. They have the design, they have the maintenance. The city reviewed it for safety and, and, sorry, this is me being a planner and not an engineer, but they reviewed your safety, operational safety, does it meet, you know, EMS, truck tourney, and all the things you would look for. But the specific conditions of, you know, the, does it meet our exact street standards? No, because this is a private street. It's really a bespoke street to meet the needs and wants in the vision of Tamwata Village.
Okay. Now, what about Public Works? Let's say a storm drain gets plugged up. Can the city go in and unplug the storm drain? Or do they have to contact the property owner to unplug the storm drain?
Sure, as a private street, majority of the utilities will be private, though there is a water line that runs through, that it will be a public water line, that then we, and we would have a, we would have a public maintenance easement placed on it, so we would do the maintenance for that. Anything that's a public utility line, the city would do the maintenance. If it's a private lateral, it would be a public, a private maintenance, or if they wanted to contract out with the city, they could do that as well as a third party. That'd be something that would be, you know, not part of land use.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a speaker slip for a Sarah Thompson from the Grand Ron tribes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're excited to be here tonight.
Thanks for putting together such a great project.
Thank you. Let's see. Yep. No, I'm waiting for the slides. All right. Thank you all very much. My name is Kristin Svakarovich, and I am the Community Development Manager at the Grand Ron Tribe. It is a delight to be here this evening and talking about Tamwata Village. This is a really exciting project that we've all been working on for several years at this point. Before we get started, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and care and review of this land use application. As a former Planning Commissioner and City Counselor, I understand the amount of time and energy and resources it takes to review these types of applications, and we really appreciate your time and dedication to this community and in review of the application before you tonight. In our presentation today, you will hear from a Grand Ron Tribal member who will talk about their connection to place. I will provide insight about our design team and the goals of Grand Ron and the vision for the site. Mark with GBD Architects, we're all in line here, so we'll discuss the site transformation and the framework plan. Ben with Winterbrook Planning will help, who helped to write the 2014 land use application with city staff, will present about some of the nuts and bolts of the application. And Ryan, who's going to join us up here at the end, is excited to talk about the detailed development plan, sort of our first redevelopment actions on-site. So with that, I will turn it over to David Harrelson.
Hello, Planning Commission. It's an honor to share on behalf of the Grand Ron Tribe what Tamwata Village project means to our community. Went off. There we go. How about that's better? We'll start over. It's an honor to be here. Thank you. I want to take the opportunity to speak about what this project means to the Grand Ron community. This effort is about healing this sacred landscape while building a modern tribal village for our descendants, those who call this place home, and for visitors across Oregon and the world. My name's David Harrelson. I'm the Cultural Resources Department Manager for the Grand Ron Tribe. I'm a tribal member there as well. I'm active within the arts and historic preservation communities here in the state of Oregon. I previously served on the governor-appointed State Advisory Committee for Historic Preservation, and I'm currently serving as your Vice Chair of the Oregon Arts Commission. I've been engaged with efforts to redevelop this site since the mill closed in 2011. So I've been involved on behalf of the tribe in different capacities as development has been considered for quite a journey. Since the tribe's purchased the property, I've been a part of informing and advising the project team about the cultural significance of the site, as well as leading efforts to provide greater cultural context for the site. I'm proud of the work we've done to build partnerships with organizations like the Chinese Diaspora Project and Oregon Black Pioneers, and look forward to continuing work of this type with those who have connections to the landscape. Tamwata Village is located between two ancient village sites of our ancestors, the people of the falls, Charcawa on the west Lynnbank side of the river, and Koshik Shix at the mouth of Abernathy Creek, today under the I-205 Bridge. Through building a modern tribal village near Willamette Falls, we are affirming a permanent place of our people at Willamette Falls into the future. The ancient story, or what we call our iconum, of Wonderful Boy describes how after a time of darkness and despair, there was only one boy left in the village at the falls. Eventually, the tribal people returned to the falls in canoes, and the boy turns himself into the first salmon to ascend Willamette Falls. When I think about what this work means for the tribe, I think about this story, our return to this place in canoes and the subsequent revitalization and abundance that followed for our ancestors when they returned to the falls. Thank you to city staff, the Tamwata Village team, and all of you as Planning Commissioners for your part in supporting this work to heal the land.
So as you. Mic on. So as you may know, the Grand Ron Tribe purchased this property in 2019, and with it came along with the CP 1402 land use decision. The community has been visioning and preparing for transformation on this 23-acre site since the early 20-teens. So many people care deeply about this land, and we honor the work of those that have come before us. We are presenting a master plan amendment that represents a tremendous team effort, and that team includes the Tamwata community members, the people of this place, who have participated in public meetings and provided our team insight about their visions and desires on-site. Community partners, Oregon City, Clackamas County, Oregon Metro, many other community organizations. The tribe, we've had tremendous amount of input from tribal members and tribal staff that have dedicated their time and resources to the development effort. Our team includes foresters and biologists and archaeologists and cultural practitioners and artists and engineers and planners who brought this vision before you today. And our consultant team, many of them are in the audience today to answer questions you may have. GBD Architects, Dal Engineering, Winterbrook Planning, and Historic Research Associates. Thank you. So development goals. These goals should look familiar to you and resonate with a prior visioning that has happened on-site. The Grand Ron Tribe is committed to providing public access and open space throughout the site. We have begun remediation efforts through securing an EPA multi-purpose brownfield grant. Our goal is to restore the landscape and provide healthy habitat on-site. We also intend to tell a comprehensive story of place. It's not place-making at the site, but it's place-keeping, keeping the stories that have happened on this landscape and keeping them alive in our community. And economic development. The Tamwata Village site and this area as a whole has always been a place of abundance since time immemorial, and our goal is to bring people, jobs, and activity back to the site for the economic benefit of this community, the Grand Ron Tribe, and the state of Oregon. All of these goals will result in healing, healing of the people and healing of the landscape. We have been engaged with public outreach for this site since we purchased the property in 2019. Our first visioning effort was completed in April of 2021, and then based off of feedback from the community, we revised that vision document and completed an updated vision in winter of 2022. As we prepared to submit the master plan amendment before you today, we continued to engage the public through a variety of means, including public events like National Night Out. We had meetings with the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association. We engaged business organizations like the Oregon City Business Alliance, and we've had many meetings with state, regional, county, and local governments. We have met, discussed, and worked with so many talented and passionate people who care deeply for this tribal land and its future. We have listened and incorporated that feedback into the land use application that you have before you today. So as Christina pointed out and spent a lot of time talking about, there are 10 structures that were identified on-site in the original land use application. And through our evaluation, we followed the same process that the city did, and that in 2012, there were reconnaissance-level surveys that were done of these 10 structural elements, or 10 structures, and we followed that analysis sort of 10 years removed. So we looked at the buildings themselves, their historical significance, structural integrity, and the feasibility of architectural reuse. And so we commissioned what is called intensive level surveys, which was a requirement of that original land use application for some of the elements on-site, but we did it not only for the initial four, but we did it for all of the 10 structures to ensure that we had a comprehensive understanding of those elements. Our intensive level surveys that were done showed that the Woolen Mill Foundation, which is number five, yes, on that site, I'm like, can't see the number, and number six, the Warehouse Foundation, were potentially eligible for listing on the National Register. And those are the elements that we incorporated into our overall site design. In talking with city staff and former mill employees, the last time maintenance was done on many of these buildings was in the early 1980s. That's 40 years of no maintenance activities. Many of the buildings previously identified a decade ago in 2014 no longer have structural integrity, and that is what's reflected in that updated analysis. A good example of this is Mill O, whose roof started to collapse in on itself in 2021. We have done this comprehensive evaluation of the elements on-site and given them great consideration, and have determined that the Woolen Mill Foundations and the Flower and Warehouse Foundations align with the community values and our vision for the site, and we support condition of approval number seven, which retains the Woolen Mill and Flower Mill Warehouse Foundation and allows for other structures on-site to be removed with a Type I process. So Tamwata Village is a modern tribal village, and it's located proximate, as David was stating, to historic tribal villages in this area. The Tamwata Village site will include mixed-use development inclusive of open spaces, retail, shopping, residential, and hotel event space. It will be a place where there are open spaces for things like farmers' markets, as you can see in this rendering. This is the open sort of plaza space on Block Two, and the intent is to really have that open, active, public space. And it's integrated with both the Flower Mill Foundation and the Woolen Mill Foundation, which are adjacent to that open space. There will be spaces on the site for cultural activities and gathering, and foremost, it will connect the land and the people back to the water. Grand Ron cultural identity will be integrated into the design of buildings and open spaces. Grand Ron cultural identity will be integrated into the design of buildings and open spaces and infrastructure, and the Chinookan Art Forum will be integrated into the design of door handles, transoms above doors, paver designs, and there will be lush native plantions and habitat creation throughout the site. As David noted, we understand that there are many people and stories connected to this sacred landscape, and we continue to partner with those groups to ensure that a comprehensive story of place is told. The redevelopment of Tamwata Village will result in a landscape where obligations and responsibilities to the plant, animal, bird, fish, and the people will be seen, felt, and modeled for others, and it will be a place where tribal values are put into action. With that, I will hand it over to Mark.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mark Raggett. I'm an associate principal and an urban designer and planner with GBD Architects, and I'm here to talk about the transformation of the site. And frankly, at the time of purchase, the site on the left of the diagram was a single-purpose former industrial complex, and the vision really that, as we supported the tribes and sort of the work to kind of, what would Tamwata Village become, was really a lot about balance, like you just heard from Kristin. So I think it's balancing public access and open space, balancing mixed-use development and a series of uses that included hotel, retail, residential, office, et cetera, as well as that restoration, significant restoration of the land, and you can see in the diagram on the right that there's sort of a renewed sort of appreciation and understanding of the falls and landscape of the historic falls site, as well as a lot of economic development and new public access. There'd be an erosion, the vision includes an erosion of sort of that higher density, the bigger buildings may push towards the north end of the site in downtown Oregon City, with sort of an erosion towards a more naturalized landscape as one moves south across the site toward the falls. And you see that also in the diagram, that green space that stretches from the falls and the lagoon to the south, and was all the way up to 99E in a green gateway, right, at that gateway to the site. And that, those green spaces will include a series of different sized and scaled public spaces that will offer different experiences, like views of the falls, interpretive areas, sort of native landscapes, ways to understand the site and gather and play and sort of be on the site in a whole new way that hasn't been possible for a very long time. Next slide, please. And I won't believe, I was, the former plan is also on this site. I think Christina did a very comprehensive job in going through the differences between 2014 and 2022. Suffice to say that the plan is very similar to the plan that was adopted and an amendment to the plan in 2014. I will just add to Christina's list, there's a green hatch that is sort of along Main Street that stretches all the way from the falls, from the dam, all the way north to 99E that is sort of is a, is an enhanced setback area. Again, it's sort of the manifestation on this diagram of that green space and that link between nature and restoration all the way up to that gateway to downtown Oregon City at 99E. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ben.
Commissioners, thank you. Ben Schoenberger from Winterbrook Planning. We prepared the land use application that's part of this submittal. And just a very much smaller version of history is I was also the land use planner for the plan 11 years ago, in the 2014 plan, so I have familiarity with the land use process in the previous case. As Mark said, the underlying plan that we're proposing tonight is actually very similar to that plan from 11 years ago. It's the same street network, it's the same general development blocks, it's similar overall objectives. The Riverwalk is in the same location, natural resource and floodplain protections are roughly the same. So I'd like to talk just very briefly about what's different. This is an amendment to that plan, so what differences have occurred? So just some highlights. Recent, the drawings in the current plan reflect more recent changes to the site, so a new baseline for existing conditions. A lot of buildings have gone away, there are some differences on the ground that are shown in our new plan set. We've updated the approval process. In the previous plan, pretty much every action had to go through a Type 3 to planning commission process. There's a lot more certainty and detail in this plan than there was in that plan, therefore we're falling back on what the code says and what the city requirements are for most projects to be Type 2 reviews that could, of course, be appealed to the planning commission, but at the baseline, the easier things can be approvable at the staff level with some exceptions. This plan increases restoration and open space area, so there is more square footage of both of those categories of development or non-development. The standards for streets in Tamwata Village are now different from what they were in the previous plan. The previous plan gave, as Christina said, choice between just follow public work standards or private streets through your own private street standards. The tribes are choosing that second option, and so therefore this plan includes some of those descriptions of what those private streets will look like. It refines the timing of the Riverwalk as a change. The previous plan sort of had a sensibility that the Riverwalk would happen first, and then all private developments on the kind of upland side of the Riverwalk would occur after that, and that there'd be a big public investment in this Riverwalk project, and then everything else would happen later. I think that, and this plan has gotten different in that there'll be a mix of maybe pieces of that riverfront activity will occur, but then also development inland on the site itself will occur, and it doesn't have to be quite such a linear path between giant expensive public investment and then things, everything else to follow. There'll be a back and forth mix that wasn't reflected in the previous version. And then finally, and I won't dwell on this again because it's been discussed, there's a different way to think about historic structures for retention and reuse. The intensive level surveys that were described as conditions of approval in the previous plan have now been completed and are integrated into the way that this plan is working as part of its protections. So that's the differences. If I could have the next slide, please. Get down to the nitty-gritty. What are we asking for? What are the actual land use nuts and bolts of what we're here tonight to discuss? And two things, I think broadly defined, there's a lot of things underneath each of them, but the primary action is an amendment to a general development plan. So the 2014 plan was, at the time, they were called concept development plans. All that's changed is the words. Now it's general instead of concept development plan. So the master plan, the general development plan is being amended. The code specifically allows that to occur under a Type 3 process. And there are little pieces underneath that plan that include things like what I'll call ancillary reviews. So we're modifying conditions of approval from that plan. There's adjustments to development standards, like the street standards, for example, Willamette River Greenway standards. All those things are detailed in the staff report and were well-covered in Christina's summary of them. Secondarily, there's a concurrent review for a detailed development plan for just the streets around Block 1. So we've shown that on the slides as well, and it's that initial development. And this is actually pretty exciting because one of the disappointments with the 2014 plan is very little, if anything, happened on the ground as a result of that plan. It was, I don't, I'm proud of that plan, it was a good plan, but not much happened in the 11 years between then and now. So what's exciting is that we're now coming to you with a concurrent detailed development plan, which represents actual construction of something that's actually going to occur on the ground. And so that's the sort of concurrent review that's occurring as part of this proposal. So that's the ask. I won't dwell on a lot of the details, but since we're coming to you with both a conceptual general development plan and specific schematically designed construction plans for streets, we'd like to talk about that a little bit more, and to do that, I'll hand off to the planning manager for the tribes, Ryan Webb.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Webb. I am the Engineering and Planning Manager for the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. And yeah, can I have a next slide, please? Thank you. So as Ben has noted, and Christina before him, before you tonight is also the detailed development plan for Block 1, which can be seen here. Downtown Oregon City, if you can see on these engineering drawings, is just to the north of that, and these are new, these are engineering drawings for the construction of the infrastructure utilities that will serve Block 1. We're excited about this body of work within the DDP because this will be the first new construction on site, and I think as Ben kind of touched upon, it's been over a decade since the original master plan, and so to now to actually be talking about new construction on the site is very exciting. Again, I think everybody's seen the demolition activities that we've completed, but now to be actually talking about new construction on site is very exciting. We spent several years to get us to get ready for this next big step. The tribe received $2 million in congressional funding in 2021 for this work. We're also, we also put this street network on our own tribal transportation plan, and so between those two sources of revenue, we plan to build these new streets. We're currently at 60% design right now, and we're working closely with ODOT and the city to complete, to complete the drawings and get ourselves ready for construction. So with approval of the DDP, we are hoping to break ground this summer on the project. We'll build new streets along Main Street, Water Avenue, Fourth Street, as well as new frontage along McLaughlin Boulevard, and a new 14-foot-wide multi-use path or shared use path along the Willamette that will parallel Water Avenue. So again, this is a very exciting time to be talking about new construction, and really this new construction will be a catalyst for development on site. So really, I just want to kind of conclude our presentation and just say, on behalf of our team, I want to thank you for your time this evening. This really is an exciting day for the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, as well as Oregon City. Tamwata Village is truly a project of a lifetime, a real legacy project, and a project for generations that aren't here yet. And so we're excited to be working with you to heal this sacred land and bring people back to the falls. We look to continue our strong relationship as government partners and happy to answer you questions that you may have as well. So thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. Provided a lot of good insight and kind of filled in some of the, some of the gaps in my knowledge base on this project as well. I'll open it up to the Commissioners if they have any questions of the applicant. Commissioner Loz?
I've heard that the tribe is accountable to several others such as ODOT, and I'm curious how their accountability to the city of Oregon City works. For example, construction codes and infrastructure, construction of that sort of thing. Are you, are you to follow the city codes or ODOT codes, or just how does that all that work?
So if we're talking about McLaughlin Boulevard, right, that is, although it's within the city limits, that is ODOT's jurisdiction, and so it's ODOT jurisdiction, and therefore we've been working closely with ODOT to make sure that that frontage is designed to their standards and how they would like to see that. Now, that being said, we've had, we've, I feel like we've had monthly meetings with both ODOT and city staff for the last six months to make sure that what we're showing on McLaughlin Boulevard works both for ODOT and the city, and then also ties in with our development on site as well. And so we've had extensive meetings with all of those, both those agencies to make sure that those frontage improvements are designed to ODOT standards, but also making sure that the city concurs with what we're doing as well.
No. And my further question is, what about construction within the site itself? Who are you ultimately responsible to?
So these will be private streets, and so again, we've been working, even though they're deemed as private streets, we've been working with the city when it comes to how we've designed those streets, and they will go through a review within your building permit to make sure that we're reviewing it, and they'll review it for, you know, safety, you know, safety and functionality and all those things. And so ultimately, with that, I would expect that there will come inspections that we will have to do, that will be completed by the city to make sure that we've built what we say we're going to build. And so there'll be that kind of checks and balances that come with the construction of those.
Okay, thank you. My final question is, why is the T in Tamwata not capitalized?
So Tamwata is Chinookan, or Chinukwawa word, and, which is the tribal language that's spoken in Grand Ron, and in written format, all letters are written in lowercase, and so Tamwata Village is intentionally written in lowercase because it's consistent with the Chinukwawa language and how it's written.
Thank you. That's been bugging me for a summer. That's all I had.
Commissioner Loz?
Just a quick question here. I know you were talking about, obviously, road construction here, and I know I went to the Two Rivers presentation. There's not an engineer currently, there's not an application for building, and I think the last time you spoke, it was a ways away. What is the timeline, if there's a timeline at all? Because I know this obviously is a large project. Do we have any kind of answers on that right now? Probably not, but I thought I'd ask.
Related to kind of building construction on site? No, unfortunately, I really don't have any timeframes for you. I think, like I said, the construction of these streets, really this land use process and then construction of streets has been our focus, and we know that that, the construction of the streets will be a catalyst for that development, especially on Block 1, but we do not have timeframes of when that will happen yet.
And then some of the restoration and plants and other items, what's the timeline look like on that possibly? What's, what are the plans on that possibly?
And so a lot of the kind of restoration work that we do is really coincide with the environmental cleanup work that we're doing, right? They kind of really go hand in hand to some degree, and so we're actively working on remediation work. The grant that we got through EPA is helping us with that. We are looking at other funding sources, other federal funding sources that can help us with further cleanup work and restoration work. So, you know, providing that we're successful with those fundings, that, you know, we're hoping in the next kind of two, three years that we'll see a lot more of that kind of real transformational restoration work occur. And so we are, like I said, we're actively seeking that, and we're actively doing the work, but a lot of it is funding dependent.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission?
I don't know if this question is for the applicant or for Christina, but looking through the materials palette, I see a lot of materials. I also see the word "should be" or "should look like" mentioned, so obviously you can't mention every possible material that you may want to use. So I just want to make sure they're not limited by this palette, and what's the process for, I mean, is there any kind of review on these? If they wanted to go with rusty green metal, you know, for something? I mean, is there anything to be said if it's not in the palette? How does that work?
Thank you. This is some of the same questions I was thinking through, and it really is a corollary to the 2014 master plan. There was a vision document, which is kind of is a, you know, a fluffier, big-picture document, and it's kind of a little bit like Version 2.0, which you see attached in the vision master plan. That was what, kind of the public outreach and planning document, it showed future buildings in a sketch format. It gave that feeling of a vision, as well as the material palette, kind of trying to explain what that vision was. And so there's a condition of approval added that because that material palette is not clear and objective, so if we wrote it to be clear and objective, then through the DDP process, we'd be constraining the applicant to a future material palette that may be, materials may be lovely, but just more pre-thought of.
Yeah, good.
And so we don't want to be put in that place. So the condition of approval identifies both Vision 2.0 and the material palette as background information, so they will not be used as part of the city's review of a detailed development plan, but they were added into this package to help in that background discussion, so the planning commission and the public really understand the depth and level of design that had come into play over the last couple of years to really implement a true new vision. new vision for the site. So there's a condition that, so planning staff, a future planner, will not be looking at the material palette for compliance. It'll just be city code.
Yeah, I don't want to speak with the rest of the commission, but I would advocate for a wider design palette and greater flexibility.
Thank you.
At this point, we can go ahead and take a public comment. And I've got a few speaker slips up here. Thank you very much, by the way. And the first speaker is Sarah Thompson. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. Okay.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak this evening and to address you. My name is Sarah Thompson, and I am an enrolled member of the Grand Ronde Tribe, a ceremonial fisher for my tribal community, and author of the recent opinion piece titled "Willamette Falls Is Worth Fighting For." I'm here tonight to speak in support of the tribe's Tamwata Village project. I'm not going to talk about what it does for the economy or for the city. I'll leave that to the experts behind me and at this table. I'd like to lend my voice in support for this project because of the importance of the falls. I stated in my opinion piece that to stand near Willamette Falls is to stand in greatness. The feeling of the mist, the sound of the water, and the experience as a whole stays with someone for a lifetime. I know it has with me. For me, Willamette Falls is not just a fishing location. It's peace and contentment brought on by the significance of that place. The lamprey harvests that I've been part of, the ceremonial fisheries, are all part of an experience that can only be experienced in that place, at Willamette Falls. The tribe's Tamwata Village project represents the greatest opportunity to create a shared experience between everyone in this special place. They have shown real progress towards bringing public access back to those falls. The public spaces, the restoration activities, and the project as a whole honors the landscape rather than minimizes it. Willamette Falls means so many things to so many people. This project allows us all to maintain some sort of connection to that place. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, and William Gifford.
Well, no, I don't care. I just, then I will have John Lewis come up.
Thank you, Chair, SB and Planning Commission. I would like to make a special request, which is to get a little extra time to say a few acknowledgements before I start my public comment.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Well, Sarah beat me to it, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we've got this new AV system, and it is amazing. I love the words, and it doesn't miss anything, right? It gets it perfectly. So Jacob left, but you've been doing a great job, Kay. I was hoping to be the first public comment under this, but you beat me to it. So I guess I'm the second. The good news is, is my good friend William Gifford let me go next. So I beat William, and I beat Paul Edgar, your two most prolific speakers.
I didn't realize this was a thing.
This is a thing. It's a very important thing. So the record should show that I beat William and Paul. That's all that really matters.
All right.
Second, I would like to thank all of you for the work that you do. I know how difficult that is. During my time here, I didn't come to the planning commission that often, mostly because, you know, it gets kind of nasty in here sometimes with some of the development approval work that you do. And so I just want you to know that, you know, that has never really set very well with me, that whole not in my backyard kind of attitude is not, you know, development matters for all of us, and most of us have benefited from development in our own homes. So I think people forget about that sometimes. So I just want to thank you for your service. It's an important job, and I personally appreciate it as a citizen. Second, I appreciated the application packet in its entirety. These packets are massive sometimes. And so really, on this one, Christina and Aquila, and by the way, the applicant as well, I kind of didn't have time for their time, but I'm going to add them into that because this was an amazing package. I always appreciate the fact that it's complete, the record, and our staff worked very hard for completeness. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. So, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read my comments because they got to go fast, so I'll try and do that. I needed to offer my public comments pertaining the assertion that the planning commission reconsidered their hearing as a legislative land use proceeding. It was confusing to follow January 14th, 2025 email requesting a delay to the approval process so that the applicant application could be processed as a legislative hearing. Legal language is not front of mind for me, so I did my research on the legal Oregon City's website, Google, and then I read the memo from Kerry Richter, deputy city attorney. Ms. Richter, I appreciate your response because it provided such clarity and at the same time laid out the legal rationale should one of the city's local community disruptors do what they do and file some form of litigation to get their name in the paper and discuss yet another, or discourage yet another quality development. So while I'm no legal expert, my research also concluded that the city should proceed with processing the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde Master Plan revision and detailed development plan as a type III quasi-judicial procedure. I think we're doing that, so please follow through with that. Please don't let yourselves get disrupted. Delay has meaning for an applicant, especially one that's also pursuing grant funding and completion deadlines. And finally, my main reason for commenting tonight was to support the conclusions of the Blue Heron Mill Ten Structures Evaluation by Historic Research Associates, Inc. Yet another excellent product in this application packet. Again, I'm no expert, but I agree with the Oregon Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer, Christine Karan, that the tribe, HRA, and the architectural and structural subconsultants completed an intensive survey and analysis. If I had more time, there are several quotes in the study I would share, but suffice to say, I was thrilled to read that there are conclusions that all but two of the previously listed structures were not eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places due to, and I'll quote, "an inability to qualify under any criteria of significance and irretrievable losses of integrity." I think that's important. These buildings have been deemed unsafe for entry. There is no certainty about the quality of the concrete, amount of structural sufficiency, and the structural soil conditions. Why would anyone who is part of the approval process feel right about encumbering an owner with the exponential cost of evaluating these kinds of elements and then having to also accept the numerous risks associated with trying to restore the building elements for show? I've spent many hours amongst those buildings, informed my personal opinion about their inadequacy for redevelopment, but beyond that, I understand how the native peoples of the region must have felt about incursion and subsequent settlement of non-native peoples. It was just after the turn of the 19th century when oblivious settlers overran the pre-settlement indigenous peoples' access to the falls and their longstanding way of life was lost to the development of these buildings and their predecessor buildings. Now, the descendants of these ousted native people maintain fee entitled to the land and the crumbling buildings. It's hard to imagine how the city could find a legitimate reason to require these buildings be kept. Please approve the proposal with the submitted conditions as written. Thank you again for your work.
Thank you, John. Okay, we'll have William Gifford come up.
I live in Oregon City. Thank you, commissioners. As a director of the, a member of the board of the directors of the Oregon City Business Alliance, we tossed this issue around a bit, thanks to John's analysis. And there are some additional comments that I wanted to share. Bottom line is that the OCBA supports this master plan revision and would like to see it move forward. Point one, these are not buildings that embody any special time, type, any special type or period. The buildings are not associated with any significant person. Also, other factors include architectural reuse, potential and structural stability. The assessment of architectural reuse and structural stability factors were completed via separate reports, and they both said, you don't need those. The structural assessment by Katina Consulting Engineers, architecturally, the opportunity for adaptive reuse of existing structures is low, and preservation is, quote, "unlikely to be cost competitive." And lastly, and this is kind of a fresh thing, but I want to get it on the record. One of our directors suggested that this might be the time to, additional right-of-way along 99E between Main Street and the tunnel on the south side of 99E. If the state or the city was ever going to gain additional right-of-way for any future work on the tunnel, make it possibly wider, the best time to get it done would be now. You might give that some thought. That tunnel, I call it the death trap. If we are ever going to make that wider, this would be the time to be considering making those changes. So that's all. Oh, I've got another 45 seconds. No, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Paul Edgar. Come on up.
My name is Paul Edgar. I live in Oregon City in historic Kanema. I'm a member of the Clockmouth County Historic Review Board, Oregon City Review Board, and I don't find in the plan anything that I would object to, that part. I think it's a wonderful plan. I endorse it, but there's one caveat: transportation. What is shown is 699 incidents of travel in peak periods. I've done stopwatch timings at Main Street and 99E, and I can tell you that the impacts on congestion will be so significant, it could be catastrophic. There needs to be some degree of mitigation built into your planning. If they exceed what the MOU has now put into place with ODOT. But where it actually comes up and we can't get cars to travel, freight, critical freight that is important to the whole state of Oregon that travels on 99E and it cannot go through Oregon City. We have that opportunity where that can happen, and it does happen. I don't see 699 incidents of travel in peak period hours accurate. I believe that the incidents of travel will have a potential, including visitors on the Riverwalk, and I was part of the Riverwalk Committee approving it. And we can't get people to the riverside of Highway 99. There's no simple way, no way that's good for handicap access. And what we're put into a position is, yes, I like the plan, but somewhere, maybe Mr. Gifford has a, he made a good point, that we could have congestion and make this accident-prone area, because when you come down the tunnel, it's blind. When you come around the corner on 99 going south, blind. You get into this one area, everything is blind. And if we throw in, you know, thousands of trips in a day, we're asking for trouble. And I don't know, I think we need to have some cause, some mitigation that has to come into play. If they exceed those standards which they're put in front of us, they've got problems, they've got to have skin in the game. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, if there is no additional public testimony, I will, I think I'm ready to close the public hearing, and we can head to deliberation with commissioners.
Chair, SB?
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity for rebuttal?
Oh, I completely forgot about that. Yes, I would like to provide an opportunity. I'm going to unclose the public hearing and provide an opportunity for the applicants to rebut any testimony that they've heard this evening.
Ben Chomberger for the applicant. We honestly haven't heard a lot from the public testimony that requires rebuttal. I guess I would like to reiterate a point that was made by John Lewis that might not be an issue, but that we do agree with the city attorney's memo about how this is a type III process and not a type IV process. The code is clear. 1750-030 says that amendments to master plans are a type III review, and type III reviews are to be reviewed by the planning commission, and that changing that procedure would itself be outside of your code provisions and your authorizations as a commission. So we agree with that point. And in general, we are in concurrence with the conditions of approval that were proposed by city staff. So we generally have no issues with the 27 conditions of approval that are in the general development plan and the 60 conditions of approval that are part of the detailed development plan. So we urge approval of it as written. And again, reviewing the comments that were just made, I don't have any specific rebuttals to any of the facts that were presented by the testifiers. And I guess I'll give Kristin an opportunity to say the same.
Yes, thank you for that. I guess my one response in regards to concern regarding traffic is that there are conditions of approval in the plan before you that provide sort of, I think, that certainty that you're looking for if there were a case where you would exceed the trip cap on site. There is a methodology put forth for doing that analysis, and we would certainly mitigate any sort of impacts if that were to occur. However, we are planning for significantly less development on site than was ever previously intended, and so we remain to be probably completely under that trip cap and won't ever exceed it with this proposal.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
I guess the final point on a comment about the design palette that was made earlier that's identified as proposed condition of approval 23 in the staff report. So that's on page 11. So that's on page 25 of the packet. And it is pretty specific that that is not... Those are not clear and objective criteria and should be regarded as background documents. So the idea was to get a flavor for potential future development, but there won't be a requirement that says this shade of green or this particular type of roofing material.
I'd hate to see you have to make a trip back here to make small changes like that. That would just be crazy. Yeah, great. Commissioner LaSalle? Yeah, sorry.
I would just like to ask you to speed up the process of construction and development of the site. At my age, I would like to be able to see the beauty that you have planned for it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, great. Right now, I think I can close the public hearing now, and we can go to deliberation. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
I don't have much to say about this application. I think the applicants have done a fantastic job. I think city staff has done a great job. I know we're just civilians, you know, up here, but I think we are pretty well-versed in the process. I think we have a lot of experience. I think we're qualified to make this decision. So, and speaking about the... Speaking about the site, I think it's been established that the history is in the site. It's the falls, it's the land. The buildings were on it. There's some history in the paper mill. But the last time I visited the mill, it was about six years ago, and those things needed to go back then. There was nothing usable about those buildings. One person I talked to there that works on large building restoration said it would probably take more money to take that building and take it away, galvanize it, and bring it back than to build something new, and it would still be ugly. So there's no point to those buildings. I see no reason why we should try to protect them in any way. And I am very comfortable approving this application as is conditioned.
Any other comments? Mr. Laws?
It would have been nice to see the original Lamont Falls Legacy Project, compare it in a grid compared to, you know... It would have been nice to see it together and compare the differences. That would have been nice for us to see, you know, because obviously there was a significant amount of thought put into the Lamont Falls Legacy Project. So that would have been...
Excellent, okay. Any other comments? I just want to thank the staff for all their support, the city attorney, and also echo Commissioner Schlagenhoffer's comments about our capability of reviewing this and making a decision on this this evening. And that's what I would like to do, and I would like to entertain a motion at this point. There are no other comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the master plan revisions as stated in item 4A on the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Abstain.
Chair Espy?
Aye. And I think that is the final decision. It's a decision of the Planning Commission, and it is appealable within 21 calendar days?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
From the notice of decision date, which will be either tomorrow or on Wednesday.
Okay, very good. All right. Okay, so would the Commissioners entertain a break at this point? Or would they like to just plow on and do the next item? You guys want to take a break? Okay.
Like five minutes? Do you want to set a time for your break?
Do... Let's get back here at 5 till. Is that going to be enough time?
Recording stopped.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I thought I had it on. Having a hard time with the green and the red, I guess. Okay, so we are back, and this is... We are back with the second item on our agenda. G L U A 240030, L E G 2404, Flood Management Overlay District Code Amendments. And I do not know... Christina, are you pretending this as well?
No, I am not.
This will be me.
So then it must be Aquila that you're going to represent? Okay, great.
Oh, are you?
I do?
Do you have the legislative script?
I don't think I do.
Well, Kay is prepared.
Oh, I appreciate that. Wow, okay. Okay, so I've... So I had the... Yeah, I mean, I read the quasi-judicial script.
Yes. And now we're going into a legislative hearing. And you have what you need, or do you need this?
I do, I do. Yeah, it'll be really exciting for everybody. Okay, so a public hearing on a legislative application is scheduled for tonight, and our role is to conduct a public hearing and make decisions about the matters before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from the change in those laws or codes. Legislative actions involve the adoption of amendment of the city's land use regulations, comprehensive plan maps, inventories, and other policy documents that affect the city or the entire city or large portions of it. Legislative actions which affect land use shall begin with a public hearing before the Planning Commission. A staff report has been prepared for each application that has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. And the staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria and are contained in the staff report. Upon recommendation from the Planning Commission on a legislative action, the city commission shall hold at least one public hearing on this proposal. Any interested person may provide written or oral testimony on the proposal at or prior to the hearing. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city commission may adopt, modify, or reject the legislative proposal, or it may remand the matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration. If the decision is to adopt at least some form of the proposal and thereby amend the city's land use regulations, comprehensive plan, official zoning maps, or some component of any of these documents, the city commission decision shall be enacted as an ordinance. Public testimony will be called in the order it was requested in advance of the meeting. And if you have not emailed the city staff to request to speak and would like to testify, please raise your virtual or physical hand when I ask if there are any others in the audience who would like to participate. For the record, please begin all testimony by stating your name, city of residence. And if you'd like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. And if you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material, and the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used, and there are oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the initial hearing is closed. So is there any conflicts or biases? I will just go down the row and have anybody chime in as to whether or not there are.
I have no bias, conflict, or interest or expertise on that.
I have no conflicts or bias.
No bias or conflicts.
No bias or conflicts.
No bias or conflicts.
Would anybody like to challenge the Planning Commission's statements on bias or conflicts? Okay, hearing none. We will have the staff report. Aquila?
Great, thank you. I'm filling in for Pete Walter. He prepared this and was not feeling well, so I'm going to do my best. But I've been pretty involved in this process so far. So I'm here tonight to present a legislative amendment to our floodplain management overlay district. And I have a few slides to go through to kind of explain the background and what we're doing. So we have... The city has floodplain regulations that apply to development within the flood management overlay district. And that's Chapter 17, dot 42. And the flood management district is an overlay zone. It's a classification that describes areas that are subject to periodic flooding or inundation, which can result in property harm or loss or disruption of public services, hazards for public health, or added expense for public services. We're updating the code tonight to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, to remain in compliance, which property owners receive through flood insurance at a discounted rate. Compliance with the floodplain development regulations is reviewed through the land use review and building permit processes. We kind of split the duties between three departments, between engineering, planning, and our building official is our floodplain administrator. Okay, so moving on to the next slide. So this is a little bit more background about how we got here tonight. Thank you. And so this goes back to 2009. FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, was sued by environmental groups for not consulting with the National Marine Fisheries Services about impacts to the National Flood Insurance Program on threatened and endangered species, allegedly violating the Endangered Species Act. So I think what was supposed to... What FEMA was being accused of not doing is, through their flood insurance program, is consulting this ESA, the Endangered Species Act, to make sure there weren't any impacts to habitat or species. In 2016, the National Marine Fisheries Services issued a biological opinion. And you may hear me referring to a BIOP. We tend to refer to it that way quite a bit when we're talking about this program. And then time moved on. I guess there was probably lots of discussions between those two agencies. In July of '24, FEMA notified cities and counties to take short-term measures for reviewing development in the floodplain. And those short-term measures are referred to as these pre-improvementation compliance measures. They are short-term, and they are called pre-improvementation compliance because the FEMA is currently going through... I think it's a NEPA process. They're going through an environmental impact study. And when that study is done, there may be either new or additional... And when that study is done, there may be either new or additional measures that cities and counties are required to take in order to comply with this biological opinion. So, compliance approaches, FEMA offered, put together three compliance approaches. One was to adopt a model floodplain ordinance that considers impacts to fish habitat and requires mitigation to a no-net-loss standard. And I'll talk a little bit more about no-net-loss in a minute. The second pathway is to review individual permits, which we refer to, or FEMA refers to, as a permit-by-permit process. So, every time there's a development in the floodplain, we would go through this mitigation assessment process. And that is how no-net-loss is achieved, is by going through these mitigation measures. And then, the third pathway was to prohibit all new development in the floodplain. So, the third pathway did not seem, is not exactly reasonable to most cities. Many cities and counties, if you just kind of think about the history of how cities were developed, they would have been developed along rivers in floodplains where you could have some access to goods and services via boat, really. So, that, so there's a lot of development in the floodplain. So, pathway three was not acceptable. Pathway number one is where we will eventually go, but it's takes, it's going to take some time to get there. So, FEMA actually required that we decide which pathway we were gonna take by December of '24. And if we either didn't tell them, they assumed we would be in permit-by-permit. And so, we, what we ended up telling them is that we are going to adopt a model ordinance. It wasn't gonna happen by December 1 of '24, so in the meantime, we are going through this permit-by-permit process. We're specifically here tonight because it's our understanding that Oregon City cannot force an applicant to comply with this permit-by-permit review if the requirement is not codified. So, this amendment will codify that requirement for development within the floodplain to go through the permit-by-permit review that FEMA is requiring. And as I mentioned, Oregon City's intention is to update our municipal code. However, in the interim, we will ask for each development to provide this mitigation assessment. Okay, next slide, thank you. Okay, so, the permit-by-permit approach. So, due to the short deadlines that FEMA imposed, this is the approach that we decided to take. So, now what we're doing is just adopting the relevant parts of the pickham as a pre-implementation compliant measure, floodplain management ordinance into our overlay district. So, we will begin working on that very soon, very shortly. And then, the planning staff will be the ones that are administering this permit-by-permit approach. And really, what it will end up looking like is similar to how we administer our natural resource overlay district, where we ask, we will ask for the applicant to provide some information. And since we are not biologists, we will ask our consultants, David Evans and associates who have the qualified people, to actually review the mitigation assessment. Okay, and so, this is kind of the big question. So, what is no-net-loss? No-net-loss is specifically referring to, ultimately, is, the idea is to protect endangered species habitats. And so, we're trying to protect some of the key floodplain functions. So, negative impacts to one or more key floodplain functions are mitigated or avoided to offset any impacts. Avoidance and minimization can lessen the impact of development. And then, no-net-loss applies to three floodplain functions. FEMA has developed these proxies, basically. So, one, the floodplain functions are storage, water quality, and vegetation. And then, the proxy we would look at for storage is undeveloped space. Water quality is pervious surfaces, and vegetation is trees. So, there are ratios that FEMA has put together that we will be looking for in their mitigation assessments. Okay, next one. So, mitigation assessment. The goal of that assessment is to describe the existing conditions where the proposed development and impacts are expected to occur, describe the project and its impacts to the floodplain functions within the special flood hazard area. The special flood hazard area is the same area as our 100-year floodplain. Synonymous, basically. And then, identify mitigation required to achieve the no-net-loss. So, applications will be required to provide a mitigation assessment to show no-net-loss, and it will basically occur in those steps. That mitigation assessment has to be prepared by a professional, a qualified professional. And so, essentially, that is a person who has some education and background in wildlife or fisheries biology, and that's at the applicant's expense. Okay, next slide. So, these are the actual code amendments that we're proposing. They're pretty, there's not a lot at this point. It's, like I said earlier, it's mostly just to get to the point where we can require this approach. So, we're adding language in, this is Chapter 1742, about the natural and beneficial values served by floodplains. We're adding language to the warning and disclaimer of liability that no permit granted shall be construed to guarantee compliance with otherwise applicable federal rules and regulations, including the Endangered Species Act. So, that kind of takes away a little bit of our liability. And then, the main one, so I'll ask you to go to the next slide, is in the administration. So, in addition to any information necessary to satisfy this chapter, a permit application must include a flood habitat assessment report from a qualified expert evaluating any negative impact to floodplain functions and identifying appropriate mitigation measures to ensure that any development will be in compliance with the 2016 National Marine Fisheries Service Biological Opinion No-Net-Loss Standards. All mitigation recommendations contained within the qualified report shall be included as permit conditions of approval. That's, that's the bulk of what we're proposing. Actually, that's not the bulk, that is everything. That's all the language at this time that we're proposing. So, the next steps, then, we will work with our applicants in this mitigation assessment approach. Partly why we chose to go this route and not rush the model ordinance is that we don't foresee a whole lot of development in the floodplain between now and July of '25. July of 2025 is when we are basically mandated to have the new model ordinance adopted. So, we were, we're not anticipating much development in that floodplain. Just in case you were wondering, the application that you just reviewed that is in the floodplain, they submitted prior to December 1, and FEMA kind of put a cutoff line and said, anything after that date, this will, these things apply to, anything before that, it doesn't apply to. So, because you can imagine a lot of cities and counties are saying, wait a minute, we have a lot of applications in the works. When does this actually start? So, we'll go ahead and prepare additional code amendments to implement that model code. We will have, through that process, we will have some engagement with boards and committees and continue working with the planning commission and the city commission and go through just a typical legislative process by July. And with that, happy to answer any questions and entertain discussion.
Was the city involved with adopting model code language from Region 10, like back in 19 to 20, early 20s, I think? Because they had a whole spate of code language that all the cities had to adopt.
I'm fairly sure that there was a recent model ordinance from DLCD. Recent as in around 2020?
Yeah.
And we did not adopt that.
Okay.
I've gone through and done kind of a high-level audit of the model code and our code, and there's, they're similar, but there are quite a few things that we don't have. There's just maybe some changes to definitions or additional definitions, so there are things we'll need to add.
Yeah, they were surprisingly particular about, you know, them, if they were gonna adopt the model code, that you just had to adopt the model code without any modifications or separation or anything. It just had to be adopted as it was with all the, you know, warts and all, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah. Yeah, they were pretty, anyway.
Okay.
I have a question. It sounds like it's gonna add another burden of cost to development because of the studies. Is, does FEMA require those studies?
Yes, they do, yeah. They, they are requiring them in order to comply with their court settlement that they came to with the National Marine Fisheries Service, if that makes sense. There, it's a, it's a great example of trickle-down, right? We're requiring it of a developer because FEMA is requiring it of us because they entered into this settlement with another agency.
Yeah, just, it's just another reason for developers not to develop. Yeah.
Well, I, well, yeah.
So, then, so then, is the burden of proof on the applicant to come up with the mitigation plan and have findings of significance to insignificant levels, then? Or does the city help out at what level, if at all, or?
I believe that the burden of proof is on the applicant, yeah.
Okay, so then, the role of the consultant is to review what the applicant submits?
Correct, right.
So, so if I could add just a couple of quick things, Commissioner Lesal, the reason why the city has to do this is because FEMA says they'll take away our flood insurance protection if we don't. So, that's a pretty good hammer.
Well, I understand, I understand that, you know, the city probably doesn't have any choice. It's just, it's too bad that the developers, again, have to, are burdened with further cost, and downhill goes, goes affordable housing.
To Commissioner, to Chair Espy's question, the reason why, so we're, we have reservations about having city staff evaluate the quality or sufficiency of this no-net-loss report because it's discretionary, and we need, we can only apply clear and objective standards to housing. And so, we're delegating that task to the applicant's expert, and the city's role will be just in checking the box, essentially, to ensure that this was a report done by a biological expert with a statement of no-net-loss, proposing conditions of approval that the city that will then pass on and attach to the floodplain review permit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Stoll?
What makes, what makes a person a qualified expert?
Well, that's a good question. So, I'm pulling out the guidance document because they talked about that a bit, and a lot of the guidance is vague. But they gave an example of qualification criteria, and to me, this makes the most sense of the, it feels like a good starting point. So, their example is that, let's see, "Reports and plans shall be prepared by persons who have a minimum of a bachelor's degree in wildlife or fisheries habitat biology or related degree in a biological field from an accredited college or university with a minimum of four years' experience as a practicing fish or wildlife habitat biologist."
And that's, that's from FEMA? That's their definition?
Correct.
Okay, cool, thank you.
They gave us the ability to define our own qualified expert, but to me, that seems like the most reasonable.
Any other questions? We'll go to public testimony. And I think I've got two speaker slips. I have Ken Bassinger, that I hope I pronounced that correctly. And I've got also Linda Bassinger, if you wanted to come up, if you wanted to come up, you can, you're welcome to, Bassinger?
Bassinger.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. I can't tell if the mic is working.
If you push the button, it'll turn green.
Yeah. Yep, and name and city for the record, if you can.
I am Ken Bassinger. I live in Kanema on First Avenue. I am the registered agent for the Kanema Club. We own Kanema Lot 200 on the Willamette Riverfront. Kanema Club is made up of about 10 homeowners who pooled funds to purchase Lot 200 from Portland General Electric in 2007. And I want to talk, not in opposition to what you're doing here tonight, because I understand that the city has you over a barrel. I mean, that FEMA has the city over a barrel, as was pointed out. But I want to talk about some of the consequences that are gonna fall out from that, because we know what they are. Chapter 1742 of the municipal code establishes the flood management overlay district, and my understanding is that that district is shown on this map. This is the map that came with the notice of this.
That looks correct, yeah.
There is a portion of this map that measures about 1/16 of an inch wide and 1 inch long. That is the Kanema area of the riverfront. It represents everything from the edge of the water to McLaughlin Boulevard. And at that scale, you can't tell where the floodplain is. And Linda's going to talk about the consequences of that. But I want to talk about the definitions. This is the model ordinance from FEMA, and I'm sure ever- This is the model ordinance from FEMA, and I'm sure everyone here's read all of it. I have. And I don't find definitions for the terms. It talks about, what did you call it? No net impact, which is zero tolerance. So if a kid goes down on the beach and throws a rock in the river, who's going to be there to catch him, to capture him? Canema Club got caught about five years ago when one of our members poured a concrete slab in the floodplain, and because FEMA had extorted the city into enforcing these very regulations, here's the bio-document from NOAA. The seven yards of concrete that was poured on the floodplain at the 62-foot elevation became a subject of a year-long, couldn't call it a litigation. It finally ended up in a settlement rather than any admission of anything, but we calculated that, and we don't dispute that there was an impact associated with bringing in seven yards of concrete. And this is where the zero tolerance comes in. What is, at what threshold is it necessary to enforce a rule? There is definitely a threshold where it's necessary. But we calculated that the seven yards of material that was brought in would have raised the water level after the river reached the level of the concrete, 62 feet. It would have, the five square feet of additional, well, actually, reduction to the river profile, draw a line straight across the river and look at it sideways, calculate the area, was five square feet. And that's five square feet would have raised the river level, and it will, the concrete is still there. So every time the river comes up to 62 feet, the river will be deeper than it would have been without that concrete. It would be deeper by 5/10,000ths of an inch. And I ask, is that significant? If you wanted to raise the river by 1/100th of an inch, you would have to bring in 100 dump trucks of dirt to raise it. I think that might be the threshold, but is 5/10,000ths of an inch worth what it costs the city to prosecute us for the violation? What it costs us to defend against that? What it costs the property owner to mitigate it? And I can tell you what our numbers were. Canema Club spent $12,000 on legal fees, and Brant Popma spent $87,000 in mitigation and associated costs. The city undoubtedly spent a comparable amount of money in the same litigation. Was it worth it? So when you get down, after you approve it tonight, and you're working toward that July deadline, and you're putting meat on the bone, please try to establish some usable parameters. Establish a threshold. Don't waste your money, ours, and then as Mr. LaSalle pointed out, the developers who might want to build something, don't waste time and money over frivolities. I think the wording that it gives in the document is, yeah, they call it the RPA, Reasonable and Prudent Alternative, and it calls for limiting development defined as any human-made change to the real estate. Any change, whether it's pouring a 200-square-foot slab of concrete, as our neighbors did, or whether it's going down there and kicking a rock over. Any change. Please put wording in there that makes an enforceable code.
Okay, thank you.
So that's my excessively long, and I thank you for allowing me to continue on, and urge you to really think about what's written.
I am Linda Basinger, and I live in the same area. I purchased a home in 1997. I was not in the flood zone. I did not require any type of insurance. Years later, I went to refinance my home, shocked to find I was in a flood zone. I hired a CentreLink concept to come out and survey my property. It was quite an expense. I was the first one in the area to ever have a survey, and I found that I am not in the flood zone. My house is five feet above the flood zone. So when FEMA drew the maps, I can see how someone in Washington, D.C., wherever they're at, would draw them wrong. You see the river, here we go, here's the big old thing, we're all in the flood zone. I guess they don't know about the 42-foot drop of the falls. That's quite significant. In 96, Canema did not flood. I don't know when Canema has flooded, maybe back in the 1800s. Since then, we have dams that present that from ever flooding. So first of all, we're not even in the flood zone. And Bob's absolutely right. There are two pieces down in Canema in this little area who are zoned multifamily dwelling. They're perfectly primed for townhouses, condos. They actually have waterfront. They could have a community dock. These costs in Canema takes three years to build a home, from the time you start until you're done. It's a long time to hold on to the money. It's ridiculous. Adding these costs make it even harder for things to be built. It would make those little homes unaffordable. And we've all heard about FEMA's bang-up jobs they've done in the Carolinas and now in the burning homes of California. I urge you to really put precautions on this. I mean, you've got to do it. They've got your feet to the fire. But FEMA was wrong, that the Canema area is not in the flood zone. So, thank you. That's it, I'm short.
Thank you, Ms. Basinger. Appreciate it. A question for staff. I was just wondering if the city has a process for a letter of map revision process or LOMER?
I believe we did. I think that our Assistant City Engineer, Josh Wheeler, processes those. I'm sorry to say that those have been put on hold. FEMA's not processing those letters of map provision while we're in this pre-implementation compliance, and it may be until that environmental impact study is completed. I guess, maybe a couple of responses to Ms. Basinger is that if she were to develop, or if there was somebody else to develop, and they came in and we looked at their property and it didn't show that it was in the floodplain, they would not be subject to the flood hazard And the other piece of that is, we sent these notices to properties within 300 feet of the floodplain. So people may have received the notice, whose property is not in the floodplain, but they're near where this action is taking place.
Right. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
Talk a lot, all right. Okay, so there's several layers of protections that we've got. So Oregon City, if an applicant wants to build something, wants to build a dock, or maybe they have a dock and found out it wasn't legal to begin with. First, you have to, you know, satisfy Oregon City, which has clear and objective standards that everybody loves. And then you've got the state level, you know, you've got the water, the water people. You've got that level that the applicant would have to satisfy. And then you've got the federal level, which is, you know, obviously another fabulous entity to deal with. My question is, is it up to the city to enforce the state and federal levels of people's inadvertent misdoings? Or does the federal-level government of land use, do they have their own enforcement? Or are, is Oregon City required to sheriff everybody's compliance or non-compliance?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm actually wondering if Carrie wants to pipe in.
Perfect question for Carrie.
Sure. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer, the answer depends on what the federal legislation deals with. Generally, the feds mine their own shop, right? Unless they have regulations that say, we have to do it for them. And here, because we need their insurance rates, they're making us the sheriff. We are also the sheriff on other things, like the Clean Water Act, right? The Clean Water Act says you can't put certain pollutants into the water. That is implemented by the Department of State Lands, and they adopt rules that say, here are all the things you can't put in the water. And then we, as the city, implement that through our stormwater permits. So that's an example where we are the policemen of the Clean Water Act. But that's not to say that Department of State Lands can't come and cite a violator of the Clean Water, right? If, you know, so it just depends on the type of legislation, but in this case, FEMA is very clearly making us the enforcer.
Okay, thank you. It's clear to me that the proper people are working on this, and they know much more about it than I ever can. So there's no point in me trying to figure it out when we've got the best people for the job currently on it. So thank you, everyone, for working on this.
Is there any other public testimony? Okay, I think I can, hearing no rebuttal from public testimony, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And we can deliberate on this matter.
Is there any way the city could appeal this to FEMA?
What do you mean by appeal?
I guess, appeal to validity of it.
Well, do you want to talk about what's going on in Tillamook County, or do you want me to talk about it?
Yeah, if you could. I don't have the latest.
Okay, so Tillamook County and a, it has been joined by a group of property owners and homebuilder activists who have challenged FEMA's obligations. They challenged these of the Pickham obligations a few years ago, and they were dismissed because the court said that FEMA hadn't acted on the obligations yet that they had agreed to. And so they were, so in other words, these challenges were premature. Well, so now they've initiated these challenges again, and because now they're not premature, now we're, you know, faced with amending our code and imposing these obligations. And so that lawsuit has just started, and it's barely off the ground, and I would expect it will be months before we know anything. The other thing is that we've had, you know, regime change in Washington, D.C., and so it's not clear at all whether or not that's going to change FEMA's approach to this. And so that's another reason why the code amendments that we're proposing are the sort of least impactful that we can come up with in order to protect the city and comply with FEMA requirements, knowing that there are a lot of moving parts, and we may have to pivot in the next six months, or expect that we'll have to pivot in the next six months, depending on how things unfold.
So if we adopt a plan like this for a period of time, and the feds decide to be more lenient, could something change even if we implement this currently? Like, because obviously, if we, if, you know, we have to because of FEMA, could there be changes on the federal level where it would become more lenient? But we're committed to this at this point in our code. How would that?
Well, if FEMA backs off and it doesn't, it changes the July deadline, or eliminates the requirement, or says they want to go back to the drawing board, what we would do is eliminate these code provisions, or we would refine them to, you know, address the concerns of the property owners and try to sort of unpack that better.
And we do that as a planning commission? Is that correct?
It would be a code amendment, just like this is. But code amendments can be initiated with 21 days' notice to the DLCD and a hearing before the Planning Commission with the recommendation of the City Commission.
Any other comments, questions?
What exactly are we doing? Are we, was this, what's expected of? Okay, well, they seem to be doing it properly, so I recommend approving it as it sits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Chair Espy?
Aye.
So this is a, this decision is a recommendation to the city council, or city commission, I mean, and that will be adopted by ordinance through their action.
Correct. And just for your information and the public's information, we intend to take that to the City Commission for the first reading on February 19th.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so communications.
Let's see, I don't have a whole lot. I don't think at this point we will have a meeting on February 10th. I don't have an agenda for that night. We will have our Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Open House. I guess we thought there would be a planning commission meeting, so we planned it to be from 6:00 to 7:00 before there would be a planning commission meeting. But I don't have anything on the agenda for that night. So our next meeting should be February 24th. And, yeah, I don't think anything can change about the 10th at this point, because we haven't noticed anything. And I don't have any other legislative items that I'm... And I don't have any other legislative items that I'm forgetting about, so, yeah. And I don't have an update on, uh, planning commission applicants. I know that there was, um, the city recorder's office was working to schedule interviews, and I don't know if they were able to get that done or not.
So there's been another round of applicants, though, there's some interest?
Yeah.
And are they, are, do they look like they're interested in doing this, or?
Well, um, I hope so, I don't know. I haven't talked, I haven't interviewed them.
Okay. Fair enough.
And our last bit of information, we hired a new planner, so we have remembered Molly, and maybe I did, I hope I told you, maybe I didn't, but Molly moved on. She was able to move to Hawaii, so. I mean, what do you do about that? Hard to compete with that. So we've hired Melissa Lopez as an assistant planner, and she started last Tuesday.
Nice, okay.
And she came back, so, that's a good sign.
Wow, alright, well, good.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that's, I'm glad that you guys are getting additional help, that's really, yeah, I imagine that's welcomed. And I think we can go ahead and adjourn.